We have a quorum, okay, very good. May I have, as printed, as you see, as printed and distributed, we're going to approve the amendment, agenda, I'm going to ask for a motion to accept the agenda as printed, and then we'll talk about changes to the agenda once we start into the discussion. So, may I have a motion to-
I can have an amendment, it says approve or amend.
I'm sorry?
It says approve or amend, we're going to-
Yeah, well, I'm-
I have an amendment I'd like to add.
We've talked about, go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, is that, if that's correct?
Yeah, yeah.
That we're talking about the agenda right now?
Yes, yes, we are.
Okay, then I'd like, I have an amendment I would like to offer the City Council, I mean, I forget what meeting I was at last night, and that is regarding the zoning text amendment that we have on the agenda. I know we scheduled for a public hearing because we do want to have that public hearing go on, but this has been a confused issue for us, and I have consulted with various people who are involved in this, and there are some questions that have come up, I see, and as I read the packet, I realized there's a lot of questions that have been asked of the maker of this, who is purportedly Pro Tem Randy Carter. I hoped he would come today so we could talk about this and ask him questions, but in addition to that, from what I understand, there is an item on his zoning text amendment that is involving an issue that the Planning Commission has nothing to do with. And when I asked our attorneys whether or not we could take that out because it doesn't involve the Planning Commission, they said, "No, you had to review the whole thing, that's not the way it works." So, I would, on the basis of that issue, and that is something that has come up again last night at council meeting, which further confused the issue, and rather than drag the Planning Commission to something we're not really familiar with, I would suggest that we go ahead with the public hearing, but table any further discussion or consideration because it doesn't involve us, and we ought to ask the council to clarify that before we get dragged into some controversy that the Planning Commission has no consideration for. So that would be my amendment, that we table the action item, go ahead with the public hearing for the zoning text amendment.
Okay, so let me ask then, since items 5.2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7, and we're going to table 5.2, but anyhow, for that discussion, to Mr. Gustafson, are we going to be able to address this in a coherent way, given that the zoning text amendment is being tabled?
Not the, just the public hearing goes on, just the action, the action item where the, we would have to take it up as new business, that's the only part I'm saying we should table that discussion until we have, for the clarification, or at least the maker of the amendment here to answer questions.
Hold on just a second, go ahead, Mr. Gustafson.
Yeah, we can still hold the public hearing, which is required, because it was published in the paper on the 16th of December for this particular meeting, with all of the zoning text amendments and also the zoning map amendments. We, in regards to action, we would obviously table and send back to City Council for further clarification. What we, I don't know if, I think we're, I don't know if we need to amend the agenda for-
Yeah, you have to amend it because it's already on the agenda, so that's the only amendment, I'm saying, everything else goes on.
Well, we're going to have to table 5.2 and 6.2 as well.
Which is, what is 5.2?
5.2 is-
No, we can, we can still do, we're still going to do a public hearing on that.
I thought we were tabling it in our discussion this afternoon.
No, I'm talking about 5.1.
I understand, I understand, but in talking with Mr. Gustafson this afternoon-
Yeah, it's 6.1.
The petitioner is not ready for 5.2, or 6.2.
Oh, is that right?
So, there's no reason, so we're going to table that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So we're just going to remove those two items.
Okay, so, as we, as discussed, as proposed by the mayor with regard to 5.1, and as I suggested, or put forth with regard to 5.2, and 6.2, those items are hereby-
No, correction, I suggest tabling 6.1, 6.1.
Right.
We go ahead with the public hearing, which is 5.1.
Correct.
Okay.
We understand, yes.
And then you're doing 5.2 and 6.2, okay, that's what, that's what my motion was.
Okay, let's try this again. As per the mayor, we're going to table 5.1 and 6.1.
No, 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 no.
As per my comment with regard to 5.2 and 6.2, it is being tabled because the petitioner is not ready. Am I correct with that?
We can still hold the public hearing, just like we're saying this, but we're going to table any action as relates to 6.1 and 6.2.
Okay.
Okay, he said 5.1 again, we're not tabling 5.1, okay.
We're still going to hold the public hearing.
Tabling 5.2, 6.1, and 6.2, if the body votes to do that, amend the agenda.
Can we republish a new date for 5.2, won't we?
Correct. I ask the city attorney in regards to your comment, in regards to, your thoughts in regards to properly amending this agenda?
So, are you speaking with regard to 5.2 and 6.2?
And also 5.1 and 6.1, just to be clear, if we, even though we're not taking any action on 6.1 and 6.2, should we also not have the public hearing as relates to the 5.1 and 5.2?
Well, my thought would just be that, well, there's a couple of things. With regard to 5.2 and 6.2, yes, we'll have to renotice the public hearing for both of those.
Okay.
Because we're still seeking additional information that the public may, which affect, may affect how the public weighs in.
Okay.
And likewise, when we do, if we are not holding the zoning text amendment for ZTA 1910, which is new business 6.1, I think that when we do hold that, that we should have another public hearing to ensure the public can weigh in on all the information that's pending before the commission. The other thing, though, is we also have to consider with regard to ZTA 1910, new business 6.1, we do have pending city litigation, and so if the, if the Planning Commission is not ready to take action tonight, I would ask that they consider the next meeting time because we do have a 15-day requirement for publication of Planning Commission meetings.
Okay. And, and thank you for that, and so the question then becomes is, should we still continue to hold the public hearing as it relates to 5.1 and 5.2?
Yeah, what value is there holding the public hearing now if it's going to return to us in the future-
With other information.
With other information.
Well, I think we can have another public hearing, but I think some people were assured that we would have a public hearing, and I saw the fact that we noticed that. I think the attorney also assured a few people, and I think that we owe them to that, at least try to keep to that part, that doesn't deserve anything, to have, hear what people have to say. And, so, it's not unusual, you know, the council will sometimes have a public hearing and then have the action item another day, so that's not unusual.
Yes, Commissioner Payne.
In regards to 1, 5.1, my understanding, we don't have all the information that we need for this, am I correct, or am I wrong?
I think 5.2 is what, is where the petitioner is, is missing information for 5.2 and 6.2.
5.2, yes, the, that applicant for that zoning map amendment, 19-11, yes, there is-
5.2, okay.
Yeah, so there is missing information, and here, what the mayor indicated in regards to the zoning text amendment was that, that items were brought up at, in regards to ownership over, regards to Hidden River Park, to be discussed, and also the fact of how do we, we as a commission determine the appropriateness of that text amendment as a, as a commission or body versus, because it deals with parks and deals with play equipment and so forth.
Was this amendment emailed to us today?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and?
You didn't get it, okay.
I mean, I have it here now, but I didn't have an opportunity to-
Okay, I understand. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'm, you know, this coming at, kind of in a whirlwind in the 11th hour, you know, trying to study this late, and now we've got yet another change, and I'm kind of agreeing with Commissioner Northcross that, you know, if we're tabling the items, then why aren't we having the public hearing? I'm just not sure where we're going with that, is that what you're saying, Commissioner Northcross?
Yes, and I'm hearing that the public hearing is being held for informational purposes, if I'm correct?
Correct. Well, a public hearing is meant to be, obviously, discussing and then also allowing the public to provide comments in regards to this amendment.
With the intent of ultimately taking action.
Correct.
I mean, now, not, not later.
Right. Yeah, I'm just concerned that there'll be other changes made, that the time we spend here may not be of value, because of those changes.
Yes, Commissioner Payne.
Is it possible for us to open that up for public hearing, hear the public, and then postpone until all the information is before us? And we've had an opportunity to actually read the other information that's before us.
Sounds reasonable. Commissioner Northcross, your comments with regard to that? Or Commissioner, or, or City Planning Manager, Mr. Gustafson, your thoughts?
Either way, but I, I would say that it's, it would not be of wasted time to hear what the public does have to say as relates to the text amendment and also the zoning map amendment along Cesar Chavez.
I understand correctly, we will open it up to public hearing even though we will not take it to vote, am I correct with that?
Well, right now, we're just amending the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Right now, we're just trying to see what's-
I got too many people talking here, I'm sorry.
I thought, right now, we're just amending the agenda, so can we clarify that, and then we can go ahead with the agenda, okay?
Okay.
So, we're, what we're asking is, in regard to amending the agenda, would be removing 6.1 and 6.2.
And 5.
And 5.2.
Wow.
5.2, 6.1, and 6.2 would be removed from the agenda for tonight, if I'm correct.
I second.
Yeah.
I didn't hear a motion.
I was just trying to clarify-
Okay, go ahead.
That, those items will be removed.
Go ahead, Commissioner Northcross, one more time, please.
Am I correct, that we're proposing to remove 5.2, 6.1, and 6.2 from the agenda for tonight?
6.2.
And not, and 5.1 will stand?
5.1, in regard to the text amendment, will stand, is that right? Yeah.
If that is the commissioner's motion, I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further comment or discussion before we go to roll call? Okay, Mr. Gustafson, roll call, please.
Yes, Chair Thomas?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Northcross?
Yes.
Mayor Waterman?
Yes.
Commissioner Payne?
Yes, to a man.
Okay, okay, motion passes.
Okay, with the public hearing, we go. First item, 5.1, right?
Right.
ZTA 19 hyphen 10, this is a zoning text amendment, and Mr. Gustafson will present.
Yep. Oh, never mind, there it is. Okay, here we have a zoning text amendment as related to the ordinance 2363, which is the medical marijuana zoning ordinance that was approved by council back in April of 2019, and we're looking, particularly looking to, looking to amend the, the section which relates to buffer distance restrictions of any medical marijuana facility from various types of city resources, such as schools, churches, childcare centers, and playgrounds located within a public park. We did a comparison between, on the left side, it's a little hard to read, on the left side is the existing ordinance that is part of, of ordinance 2363, we're looking at amending Article 3, Chapter 11, as it relates to the medical marijuana districts within that particular chapter, in regards at various subsections. What is being proposed is, you have a number of, on, within the existing ordinance, there is a, the way it's written in regards to how it's interpreted, basically, the, the start point and end point of a buffer distance is measured from the door of the contemplated location of a medical marijuana facility to a door or the center line of the playground of the either church, school, and childcare center. What is being proposed is, is they define the ingress, and what is being proposed on the right side of that Section B represents the same language that is located within the Pontiac's Medical Marijuana Facility Ordinance that was approved by the voters, which uses and distinguishes ingress, and how they are interpreting ingress, which you can see down on Section 2, towards the bottom of the right side, is, ingress is defined as the vehicular ingress, or meaning access drive. Or, if we're talking about the language that's in the ordinance of the primary entrance associated with the, or, primary entrance associated with the address of the building, in talking with, a conversation with Pro Tem Carter, there was conversation that he had mentioned that that would mean either a drive or a door. So what really is, allows a certain amount of flexibility for the applicant to use whatever means they have in regards either a door or a driveway to accomplish the required distance between that facility and also those types of uses, if that's making sense. And if, there is a certain amount of flexibility within that compared to the existing ordinance, which interprets it to being door to door. The last part was, there was an added language in regards to one of the public parks in downtown on Saginaw, which is called Hidden River Park, and within that park, there is some play equipment of drums, and the ordinance did not dispute the fact, if it was a park or wasn't a park, meaning it was either public or was it private, because that issue came up again last night, as the mayor indicated, what it was, was, what is interpreted, is there were questioning in regards to, is those drums qualified as playground equipment? It goes on to read that there, there is the Public Equipment Safety Act of 1997 that identifies it can be any apparatus, such as a swing or a slide, or a teeter totter, seesaw, whatever you want to call it, that could be used, would be considered as playground equipment. Within that, there, there was clarification from Mr. Carter, saying that since you could not climb on the drums, and since there was businesses that are adjacent to or nearby those playground equipment, those drums, that they should not be considered playground equipment, thereby disqualifying Hidden River Park as a buffer from any medical marijuana facility. And it's kind of interesting, because I did spend some time looking at that public act of the Playground Safety Equipment Act of 1997, and nowhere in it, it talks about that you cannot, it has no reference in regards to playground equipment that is, has to be, has to be climbed on. I mean, there's plenty of playground equipment that you don't climb, there's plenty of things that you can swing on, you can run on, and so forth, but he specifically said climb, and then also, there's nothing in that act that says it restricts the type of business uses that are located nearby or adjacent to. So I kind of question, why are we picking those types of requirements based upon this act that isn't even stated within that act? So those are the type of things, and from a planning commission standpoint, yes, we do master planning, and we do parks and recreation planning, but we're not, we're not identifying what is considered as parks and what is not considered as parks, what is considered playground equipment, and those types of things, so we, we want to clarify a number of these things so we can go back to City Council and ask them to provide us certain clarity. Okay? That kind of ends regards, so what is being presented as the amended ordinance?
Okay, so, once again, 5.1, we're, we're going to have a public hearing-
Correct.
But we're not taking action.
Correct.
Okay, all right, so for everyone's edification, whether it's these items or any items, the way we handle protocol for public hearings is that, well, first off, we'll go to my fellow commissioners for comments and questions, as they deem appropriate, getting, satisfying some of their questions, then we will open up public hearing, we'll aggregate all those questions, we'll then close public hearing, and we'll come back here and attempt to the best of our ability to answer those with technical answers from the planning manager. So with that being said, and then we'll ask for a motion, well, excuse me, in this case, well, we're not taking items to vote, so, so with that being said, Commissioner Northcross, please.
I'll listen, I'll listen, let me listen.
All right, Mayor Waterman, please.
I would like to listen to, I would like to- I would like to listen as well and hear the comments.
Okay, Commissioner Payne, please.
No questions at this.
Okay, and I guess I'll go along that same line, and we'll open this up, we'll, I'll listen. Public hearing is now open. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, I'd like to ask you to keep your comments to three minutes or less, if you will, in the interest of time for all of those who are present, and the full docket that we have, so.
Good evening, Michael Stein, I represent businesses in the downtown area, and I think it's important that this board know, and I think you may have to ask Mr. Chubb the question, but by doing what you did, and removing that action item of the zoning text amendment, now it cannot go forward to City Council, and therefore, we're back in the same position we were several months ago, where Hidden River Park isn't taken care of, it's not a park, it's a concrete pad, it's always been a concrete pad, somehow four pipes were put there and it turned into park equipment? I hope all of you have looked at what you're going to consider, park or park equipment, because it's four, it's four pipes, that's what it is. There's a lot of people in that downtown area that have had businesses under contract for over a year, that were going to plan on doing some really nice things to that concrete pad, and making it better than what it has been for the last 30 years, which was nothing, that's what it was. We can't reveal all these plans to you yet, because all of these applications haven't been able to be submitted, but I can tell you, from representing people in that area, that there were very nice plans for what that concrete pad could be. Instead, you have four pipes there. Additionally, we're going to have a whole mess, because it's my understanding, based on what action you took by removing that action item, that now the entire process as it pertains to that area can't be dealt with prior to these applications going in on January 27. And I would ask Mr. Chubb if I'm right or wrong on that, by, but by not being able to put that on as an action item, it holds it up from going on further. We easily could have had a discussion tonight about that park and about the, and about the, the, the distance measuring, very easily. We've discussed this ad nauseam for the last several months, there was not much more that needs to be discussed about that pad of concrete. If Mr. Carter has made it abundantly clear at these meetings what his issue was, that that's not a park, you heard the whole City Council say that that isn't a park, we could have addressed that issue this evening. I, I don't see how an argument over semantics, because he said you can't climb on them, but, but, Mr. Gustafson, you, you believe someone may be able to swing on them? I, I mean, it, it, anybody can look at this and see that this is, not only is it not playground equipment, but it's nothing that children play with, even if it's not considered playground equipment. I've, the business that I represent is across the street, I've never seen anyone, a child, quote unquote, play on that, I've never seen one jump over it. As a matter of fact, it says on it, "Do not jump on." So what is, what was the idea of putting that there, really? What was the idea of that? Somebody, please tell us, if that was the idea for it to be playground equipment, why is it that? Why is it four pipes? It was simply put there in January, I believe, January of, of, of 2019 is when it was alleged to have gone in, nobody knows how it got there, nobody knows who put it there, all we know is it's there, and now that whole area is blocked off from being able to at least even apply for a medical marijuana facility in that area. That's basically the hub, the heart of the downtown area, that that knocks out. Additionally, for one reason or another, the city can't get out of its own way, because people had great plans, and still do have great plans, to make that more of an entertainment area, and I think that would benefit that area a lot more than the four pipes that are there that are right now, that are there right now. I urge you to reconsider putting that back on as an action item, and save the city from having to go down that litigation path that we're now going to have to go into for the next several weeks as a result of that amendment that you guys did here. I urge you to reconsider that.
Thank you.
Blair McGowan, One South Saginaw Street. First of all, I, I think Mr. Johannes Bold's due process has been denied by your failure to deal with his actions tonight. He's been making this application for many months, and the Planning Commission is in default of its responsibilities for not dealing with this. Secondly, I feel you're also in default for not dealing with the first issue, you're not going to vote on it. You interviewed Pro Tem Carter, you followed up with a bunch of questions- Tem Carter. You followed up with a bunch of questions, which he answered in detail. There is no reason you can't deal with this issue. It's not complicated. There's two issues on this. Number one, it removes the ambiguity in how you measure. There is, right now, an ambiguity between the way the people voted in August of 2018 and the way the city council passed a zoning ordinance. This clarifies it very simply. The second thing it does is eliminates the effort by the mayor to eliminate downtown as a spot to have medical marijuana by this phony park, which was placed there when a building burned down, and the DDA fixed up the property, and Frank Todd called it Hidden River Park when I suggested it to him. It's not a park. It's not on the existing master plan as a park. It's now on the recommended master plan, but it has never been a public park. And on July 2, when city staffer Riley breathlessly announced that there was a kaboom grant, city council president Kermit Williams properly identified it as a ploy to eliminate all the medical marijuana dispensaries within 500 feet of it, attorney Chubb said, oh, it doesn't really change the status of it. The status was changed last January when he put those drums in. Well, the drums aren't playground equipment, and it's not a park, and this is a bald-faced effort to eliminate downtown. It's a dishonest effort. And you're denying the due process of the applicants, and you've been denying it since July 2. And now it's January, and you still haven't dealt with this. You could vote tonight. There's no reason not to. What you're doing is you're forcing the citizens to use initiative and referendum to enact their will. By your cooperating with the mayor to deny citizens their right, you're forcing citizens to take initiative and referendum to deal with the city administration and the laws that we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just want to say one more thing. Robert Hines, 21, North Saginaw. The Hidden River is between, you know, across the street from a pawn shop and next to a brewery, I mean, a bar. Keep in mind, what's being, I can't agree more with what was said from the other two gentlemen as well. But we are now in a position where we have to spend tens of thousands of dollars preemptively, not knowing if this is actually going to be resolved or not, because we have to at this point. And it's not really fair, because it's impacting, it's not impacting these, you know, massive companies, marijuana companies from Colorado. It's impacting residents that put, you know, believed in Pontiac and believed in, you know, medical marijuana in Pontiac. So I can't agree more. This is, this needs to be, you have enough information, more than enough information, to decide on this. There's nothing that you need to hear more. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, any further comments from the public? That being said, I'm going to close the public hearing. And Mr. Gustafson, if you will, respond to the questions, please.
Yes. There were several, obviously, some very passionate comments in regards to what is believed to be playground equipment and what's not, really, and again, that's what the whole, the whole ordinance amendment really gets at in regards to, is it playground equipment or not playground equipment? And I guess, the question becomes, it's very difficult to say that, you know, from what has been said and what is included within the amendment by looking at the Act of 1970, 1997. When we look at that, and rightly so, I mean, when we did look at it, we kind of questioned it, if that was the right act. There really wasn't nothing else. But the question really becomes is, when you, when you talk with whoever is Mr. Carter and his review, it was talking about climbing and talking about uses. And I understand what you're saying, but if that is criteria for the reasoning to not suggest that those are drums or tubes, is how we're prefacing them, it kind of questions in regards to, what other factors are we trying to look at to determine that? I mean, right now, playground, playground equipment can be many things. It could be many, many type of features that interjects that continuous enjoyment for anybody who is there. It's not all related to kids. It could be related to any of any ages, of any age groups. And so we kind of look at it from that perspective. It's not just one age group that we're looking at as we talk about Hidden River Park and those picker drums. And so, and looking at that, and yes, it was, information was supplied, and I guess we still had some questions in regards to the validity of, regards to why that picker act, and also for the fact of the questioning in regards, is it public space? I mean, we did do some further research. It was always owned by the DDA. DDA is now been eliminated. That property does go back to the city of Pontiac, so it is a public park. Really, the question comes down to that playground equipment and providing that information and talking with Mr. Carter even further. Yes, by, yeah, let's see. Really, from what we had heard, remaining statements that were made is much more comments, more so than questions, from where I was, the notes that I had taken. That's all I have.
Were there any questions that were posed out there that were not answered? Yes?
If the public hearing is over on that one, I'd like to have a comment about that public hearing before we move on. So I was glad to hear the comments by people from, on 5.1, that public hearing. I know we've got a lot of others to move on, so I wanted this to be very brief. But we, and I'm glad to say, the process is moving forward. After six moratoriums, we finally got this process started. Applications are coming in. This zoning text amendment was attributed to Randy Carter, and the main part of it has to do with measuring, when you measure. This thing about Hidden River was, is something that planning commission isn't even, isn't on our board to, it's not something we consider in our power. So I didn't want the whole thing to be hijacked by Hidden River, and the planning commissioner has told you that it's not proper for us to be considering it even. That should be decided somewhere else. But there was a council, you know, and this thing is all confused, because the council did unanimously pass a acceptance of the kaboom grant on July 2 for Hidden River Park. So, and then last night, it's all confused again. So I just didn't want this whole process to be hijacked by one matter, which is just a small part of what the real text, zoning text amendment is about. And I just wanted to reiterate that the things I would have asked Randy Carter, and he is the Pro Tem, he is the, when we ask, he's the author and the confirmer of this, and so he's the only one who could answer the questions. And this is the fourth or fifth reiteration of a zoning text amendment that has been attributed to Randy Carter. So one of the things I wanted to ask him, as I'm reading through the questions that the planning commissioner, I'm sorry, our planner had asked, was, why do we need a sixth now, a reiteration of the same zoning text amendment? What's wrong with the, what the planner has already put in there? Why is this coming so late? What difference does it make? And I would like to hear from Randy Carter himself. We haven't had a chance to discuss this in council meetings for one reason or another. And so that's what I would like to know, because we've had moratorium after moratorium, and this is yet another zoning text amendment, and I wanted to ask Randy Carter, who has declined to answer that, and some other questions as well. So that's what I thought was the main thing here. The main part of this, I'm going to deal with the main part of this zoning text amendment, and ask some questions that I think need to be answered as we consider this matter.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Any further comments or questions from my fellow commissioners? Commissioner Northcross, anything?
No.
No? Commissioner Payne?
No.
Okay. So, and I do not, as well, we're not taking action?
Right.
Okay. So, in kind of an unusual twist here, we, first time that, as I've been sitting here. So anyhow, it is what it is. So we've had a public hearing, but we're not taking an action on 5.1. So now we go to, and we've talked about 5.2, are we, are we now still going through 5, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 for presentation?
What we're going to do is, well, yes, there, as, as the remaining items in regards to public hearing, what we're going to do is, all of the zoning map amendments that were made, a couple were along Caesar Chavez, one we had dealt with. We had two more on Caesar Chavez and three on Walton Boulevard. And when